Okay, good evening. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the public session of the board meeting for today, November 7th. Time is 6:07. And this is Warley, would you conduct a roll call, please?
President of the Board Melissa Regal.
Present.
Clerk of the Board Robert Garcia.
Present.
Trustee Karen Bradford.
Present.
Trustee Joseph Navarro.
Present.
Trustee Eric Ditweiler.
Present.
Dr. Trenton Hanson.
Present.
Paula Ford.
Present.
Dave Dubrowski.
Present.
Rosa Santos Lee.
Present.
Daniel Brooks.
Present.
Student Board members Priscilla Perez.
Present.
Alan Rodriguez.
Present.
Haley Bisbee.
Present.
Kayla Hurst.
Present.
Okay, thank you. If I could have everybody stand for the flag salute that will be led by Dr. Hanson. Thank you. This evening's inspirational comment will be conducted by trustee Garcia.
Thank you, President Regal. I've got a quote to share here from Captain Sully. And it goes like this, "A leader sets the tone and must create an environment in which all can do their best." You get what you project, whether it is calm and confidence or fear, anger, and hatred. People will respond in kind. Courage can be contagious. Those words hold true for us here on the school board. Our leaders set the tone. The way we all comport ourselves sets the tone. In the past two years, we have all faced tough decisions during the COVID pandemic. And we all created an environment in which we could all do their best. From the superintendent right on down to the list of administrators, teachers, and staff. Good, strong leadership from the top was instrumental to ensure smooth operations here in the district in a safe manner for everyone, most importantly, our students. Group unified was well-prepared for the pandemic. I'm proud to sit on this board with those I sit with, including our past president, Mrs. Karen Bradford, and our current president, Mrs. Melissa Regal. And I appreciate you all and look forward to our future year to your purpose, our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Reports from closed session. Mrs. Santos Lee?
Thank you, President Regal. I have a few things to report out. In closed session, in a five-zero vote, the board authorized legal counsel to appeal CBE case number S07392122. And in closed session this evening, the board in a five-zero vote agreed to a special education settlement for case 2022080062, resolving all issues. And lastly, in closed session, the board agreed in a five-zero vote to grant a postponement for discipline hearing case number 23-005. Thank you.
Thank you. Student Board member reports, Dr. Hanson?
Yes, thank you. It's great to see our student board members with us tonight. And we're excited to listen to your guys' reports. So we'll start tonight with Kayla and just work our way down to Priscilla. So Kayla, would you like to start first with Rubito High School?
Good evening, President Regal, Dr. Hanson, board members, trustees, and cabinet. Rubito is getting ready to transition into the final two months of the first semester. Girls and boys soccer and basketball have officially started practices as well as our co-ed wrestling team. On November 1st, cross-country hosted league finals on our home course. Our football team had their final regular season football game against Harupa Valley, where we honored senior football players, team managers, and cheerleaders from Rubito and Harupa Valley. There was also a ceremony honoring Coach Wayne Cochran before the game. Coach's family was there, as well as his former players and coaches, followed by the unveiling of his memorial at the home entrance of the stadium. Our campus was buzzing with excitement as our football team played their first CIF match against AV Miller on Friday. Our boys put up a good fight but finished just short of the final score. ASB is planning a volleyball versus football volleyball game for good, friendly competition. On October 25th, 26th, and 31st, ASB put on Freddie's Fun House in reference to our mascot Freddie the Falcon, where we transformed our backstage area into a spooky haunted maze for students to go through with their friends to get into the Halloween spirit. Rubito's marching band and color guard, the Delta Alliance Corps, brought home first place from the Mustang Classic Competition. They have a competition on November 5th at San Gorgonio High School, the district showcase on November 8th at Harupa Valley High School, and another competition on November 12th at California High School. With application deadlines for California State Colleges on November 30th and universities of California on December 1st, every Thursday of November, our amazing college and career counselors are assisting students with their financial aid and applications to make sure we get them in on time. Our juniors and seniors had the opportunity to go on a field trip to tour Cal State Fullerton to get a feel for the campus and see if it was fit for them. Class of 23 has their senior assembly followed by their class photo on November 9th. Rubito's Wellness Center and the Portables have been repainted to achieve a clean, modern look. The construction of the Elliot Duchan Concert Hall is going smoothly and is set to be finished in the early part of 2023. We will be hosting a community schools Thanksgiving grocery giveaway on November 18th to help families from our community this holiday season. It will be hosted by a partnership of the JUSD Community Schools and will take place at the Rubito Football Stadium. This year is going by fast, but it's nothing our Rubito Falcons can't handle as we continue to soar with pride and focus on winning every day because we are Rubito. This concludes my school board report for the month of November. Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla. Very good. Haley, Patriot High School?
Good evening, Superintendent Hanson, Cabinet, Board Members, and Trustees. To begin November, Patriots College and Career Center hosted several workshops for both students and parents as they prepared to submit their financial aid applications. In celebration of those who submitted their FAFSA by November 3rd, Patriot is granting each eligible senior two additional graduation tickets. This past Friday, November 4th, ASB hosted a fall festival in which many of our more than 40 programs on campus partook, inviting our students to socialize through food, games, and crafts. Having begun today, Patriot is hosting a canned food drive from November 7th to November 16th in preparation for the holidays. All non-perishable food items will be donated to the district to be further dispersed as necessary. From November 12th to November 18th, ASB's Warrior Spirit will be hosting a week of thanks in anticipation of Thanksgiving the following week. During this time, we invite all students and staff to reflect on that which they are grateful for. On November 21st, ASB will be attending the annual California Association of Directors of Activities Conference in Anaheim, where we will gather new ideas in regards to improving our school climate, ethnic representation, and overall inclusivity. On November 28th and November 29th, upper and lowerclassmen will meet with their class presidents for the monthly House of Representatives meeting. On November 29th, juniors will complete the ASVAT test. As for athletics, fall sports concluded their seasons this past week. Congratulations to our football, cross-country, cheer, golf, boys' water polo, volleyball, and tennis teams on a phenomenal season. Lastly, a word from Ms. Rodriguez, our theater teacher at Patriot. Members of Dramatis Persona, our technical production theater class, stagecraft, and production class have all been hard at work on our fall production of One Softlight Town by Tracy Wells, premiering December 1st at 4:00 p.m. and December 2nd at 6:00 p.m. Our hands-on, student-led theater program is excited to showcase their theater knowledge and skills for our community and invites everyone to enjoy a show. A big shout-out to our amazing technical leads and their parents. Come out to support our theater program on December 1st and 2nd. That concludes my report for the month of November. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley. Well done. Alan, what a vista.
Good evening, Board Members, Cabinet, and Community Members. We had a lot to celebrate after our first quarter ended. Awards were given to students with good attendance, honor roll, and students exhibit attributes of our school's core values, pride. The Career Center had a very successful college and career kickoff day. Seniors attended financial aid and college application workshops, while juniors completed career exploration activities and attended a guest presentation. There was also a career fair during lunch where students could network with local colleges, military recruiters, and potential employers. At the end of the day, all students participated in a scavenger hunt in which teachers and office staff provided fun facts about their favorite college, career, or military branch. Over 50 college applications were submitted on this day. That's pretty crazy, though. There's an upcoming field trip on November 15th for students interested in career or technical education program. Students that signed up will be attending the IE Apprenticeship Expo in Moreno Valley, where students will learn about register of apprenticeships and manufacturing technology and healthier industries, as well as colleges that offer certification in these areas. October 28th was a great fun Friday. Got to trick-or-treat around the campus and nutrition services provided delicious nacho bar. I could vouch that the nacho bar was indeed delicious. ASB students also went to Sunset Elementary to help with their trunk-or-tree event festival. During the month of October, our AS6 Service Club collected over 400 pairs of socks to be donated to local homeless shelters for this October. They have also been hard at work making blankets for Operation Pinky. Friday, November 18th is our next fun Friday. The theme is Pajama Day, and we are having burgers. Our next blood drive is December 9th. For Veterans Days, our ASB students made cards to give out to local veterans. Trustee Garcia, we appreciate your service in the U.S. Navy. We also made you a custom-made card. I don't know how to explain this. But it's yours. I also have extra card in the case, there's other veterans I forgot to mention. This is what has been happening at our awesome cabinets. Have a good evening.
Great job, Alan. And I think I'll see you on Wednesday, right? All right. Priscilla, Harupa Valley High School?
Good evening, President Regal, trustees, Dr. Hanson, and cabinet. My name is Priscilla Press, and I will be representing Harupa Valley High School. We continue our fall sports with JVHS Football, having a big 27-21 win against Azusa High School in round one of CIF playoffs this past Friday at the Jaguar Stadium. Jags will face Marnartha High School this upcoming Friday, November 11, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in Pasadena, California. We are excited and look forward to our upcoming winter athletics program with our boys' Jaguar Tip-Off Tournament starting November 15, 2022, in the JVHS gym. ASB has started off our preparation for our winter activities, including our winter formal, winter rally, and our winter spirit week. Our winter rally will be taking place next Friday, November 18th, to send our winter sports off to a great season. Continuing our Jag-kind activities at JVHS, ASB will be hosting a week of thankfulness next week, where we set up tables and canopies in the center of the quad and hand students thankful cards for them to fill out. Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday will be the dates that ASB will deliver these cards to the receivers. Noche Cultural was a success. Food was served such as tacos, pan dulce, nachos, and tostilocos to enjoy with a delicious agua fresca. Special performances were enjoyed from our school banda, as well as an out-of-school banda. Lo Córico gave us an amazing performance as well. There was a boutique stand selling cute Dia de los Muertos accessories. There was face painting, as well as ofrendas made by students as projects for their Spanish class. Puffs Play was October 26th to 28th. Hundreds of students, staff, and parents enjoyed this funny, full-length play. Three judges from the CETTA High School Theater Festival attended the plays and gave them some great scores and awards. The tech crew each won an award, and several actors also won awards. These awards will be given to them at the festival in January. Winter Band Concert was Wednesday, November 2nd, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Priscilla, and thank you, students, as always. Thank you. You guys did a wonderful job, and we really appreciate the reports. But more importantly, we appreciate all that you're doing as student leaders on your campus. Please convey our appreciation to the rest of your student body for all the hard work that they put into improving the culture of our campuses. So, well done.
Thank you. Item number seven. Recognize Best of the Best for September and October Employee Recognition Program. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, President Regal. And could I ask President Regal, trustees, Dr. Hanson, if you could please come in front of the dais to help with the recognition tonight? So Best of the Best, as the board knows, is our employee recognition program that we have here as a district. And our Best of the Best Committee, they meet each month and they consider nominations from sites and departments around the district, all submitted by our employees on behalf of their colleagues, who they want to see recognized as our Best of the Best. So this truly is our Best of the Best. It's very exciting. And this year, we're changing things a little bit. We're going to be doing a monthly recognition. And so each month, we'll be recognizing one of our certificated employees, one of our classified employees. And on occasion, intermittently, we'll be recognizing one of our administrative management team members as well. So because this is the first recognition that we're doing this year, we're actually recognizing for both September and October. And so we have five recognitions this evening. Unfortunately, because maybe just the times we're in, it's flu season, we do have a couple of people who are not able to be here with us. For those who were able to be here when I call your name, if you could please come up and accept your award. And if you wouldn't mind standing to the side once you receive that also, so that we can take a picture with the board at the end altogether. So our first recognition goes to Ms. Abigail Amador. Now she's coming up, I'll tell you a little bit about her. Ms. Amador is a campus supervisor at Mission Middle School. She's always known for trying to find ways to increase staff and student morale. Recently, she helped redesign the staff lounge and transformed it into a welcoming space for staff members. Thank you very much, Abigail. You're amazing. Next, and this will have to be virtual, he's up on the screen. Our next recognition goes to Mr. Alan Vance. Mr. Vance is a maintenance worker in our Maintenance and Operations Department. He's literally a jack of all trades. Does all kinds of incredible things around the district. He's always eager and willing to learn something new and approaches every assigned task with a positive attitude. So congratulations, Mr. Vance. Our next recipient, Ms. Nancy Arroyo. She is also unable to be with us this evening. She's actually at an English learner instruction conference. And so she's learning more and learning about how she can help to support our students and teachers throughout the district. She is a teacher on special assignment. She's a bilingual resources teacher in our Language Services Department, and she constantly strives to provide the most relevant resources and materials to her fellow staff members. She's very supportive and very professional, and I know that she's watching from where she is at her conference. So congratulations, Ms. Arroyo. Our next recipient is here, Mr. Joseph Bolani. Mr. Bolani is an education specialist, a special education teacher at Harupa Valley High School. He's considered his students' champion. He's constantly guiding and supporting them, and he works collaboratively with his colleagues and is always willing to assist when needed. So congratulations, Mr. Bolani. And last but not least, our management team member for this session. Unfortunately, Christopher Mercado, who's amazing, was not able to be here this evening as well. He is a social worker for us. He works with our children and family services within our PICO department. He does amazing things, constantly going above and beyond for his team, his students, and the families. The resources that Christopher provides, JUSD families, ensure that they feel comfortable, safe, and at home here in Harupa Unified. And so we're so proud of all of them. Congratulations to all of our Best of the Best. And as I said, if you could all please stay up there for a moment so we can get a picture together.
Item eight, recognize funding from the Federal Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program. Mrs. Ford?
Thank you. So the California Department of Education recently notified the district that $118,077.96 has been awarded to JUSD to continue the implementation of its Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program. And that is at four schools, Inarbuckle, Missionville, West Riverside Elementary, and Pacific Avenue Academy and Music. Thank you.
No, thank you. Item nine, introduce candidates for the November 9, 2022 Governing Board Election. Dr. Hanson?
Good evening. As is customary for us to acknowledge those running for trustee areas. In trustee area one, we have Mr. Garcia. In trustee area three, trustee Bradford. And in trustee area five, President Melissa Regal, as well as Dr. Janet Long, who I see is here with us tonight. Thank you.
Board member comments. Trustee Garcia?
Thank you, President Regal. Thank you, students, first of all, for all the reports, all the hard work you do. Appreciate your leadership. And of course, Alan, thank you so much for my gift card. Nice message there. Really appreciate it. And I think the theme I heard from all the students today was no college. Get ready for college. We asked that, military, apprenticeships. Obviously, not everyone goes to college. So a lot of great things going on in the community for that. Did have an opportunity to go to that game for just a little bit. Priscilla, congratulations to the team for winning on Friday and look forward to that. And finally, Veterans Day Parade is on Saturday. So it's a play bop. There's some details online somewhere. I just know it's on Saturday. And tomorrow's election day. So if you haven't elected, if you haven't voted yet, please get out and do so. That's your voice, your vote. So, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Bradford?
Thank you, President Regal. As you'll hear a little bit later in the evening during the donations, we had a couple of spectacular donations. So I want to say thank you to the Barona Band of Mission Indians for its $5,000 donation for the benefit of Van Buren Elementary School. And I really want to say how impressed I am with the Sky Country Booster Club for its obvious amount of hard work that it took to raise the $10,510 that it is donating to the Sky Country Elementary School for field trips. Way to go, Booster Club. I attended the Harupa Valley High School Theater Production. Thank you very much, Priscilla, for the invitation. Production of Puffs or Seven Increasingly Eventful Years at a Certain School of Magic. It was a parody of the Harry Potter books. It was very funny as a script and a lot of fun as performed by our theater students. I also attended the Think Together Shine a Light 25th Anniversary celebrations at both our Van Buren and Camino Real Elementary Schools, which were also attended by the founder of Think Together, whom I chatted up about this marvelous after-school enrichment program for our students. And I'm sure that Mr. Dubrowski or Dr. Hanson could tell you much more about it. I've always been impressed by it, and I'm glad it's available for our students. It's been an action-packed month. I've also attended the annual combined meeting of the Riverside and San Bernardino County School Board Members Association Meeting Dinner, where we heard our state school superintendent, Tony Thurman, review current state programs and opportunities. Thank you, President Regal.
Thank you. Trustee Navarro?
Thank you. Really just quick comments here. I'd like to touch base again, like what trustee Garcia said. We have our elections tomorrow. If we haven't already voted, it's imperative that you get out there. And if you want to be heard, you want your voice to be heard, then you definitely need to vote. I know a lot of times, most people think when we have our president election is where it's most important, but you're more likely to be affected by your local officials than you are by the national officials. So please, if you haven't voted, make sure you get out there tomorrow and get your ballots in or vote in person. And then, kind of almost what trustee Bradford here was saying is that, come up, we have the Christmas season. And what I think about Christmas season is not just presents and the decorating that I've been doing at the house is volunteering. You know, and a quote that kind of has always stuck to me is, "What is the essence of life? To serve others and to do good." This is spoken by Greek philosopher Aristotle over 2,300 years ago. One of the most ancient quotes about volunteer proof, that giving back to the community is hardly a new concept. With so many people less fortunate than us who can't afford to travel and with funding for social services being brutally splashed, especially since COVID, volunteering is becoming increasingly more important these days. From immigrants escaping violence conflicts of wars across the world and underprivileged children needing education, to homeless people losing their housing. Not all of us, you know, we've heard some great words about funding that we got, but none of us can all do funding. We can't donate goods. We can't donate, but what you can donate is your time and being present. Growing up as a kid, we did soup kitchens. My dad used to dress up as Santa Claus every year and go to the elderly home, where it just brightened up their day. And it didn't cost us anything. It just cost us maybe a couple hours that night. And I always liked going and being an elf. And I remember that to this day, was I was an elf and I was there with Santa. So, you know, teaching our kids to give back to the community at this time of year, because they're all writing letters to Santa and they want, they want. But let's let them remember that giving is the best gift that you can in this world. So, you know, you don't have to always donate money. And it's just your time. Maybe find a homeless person that you see by Starbucks every morning, or you have a chance to volunteer at one of our centers. That is one of the most important things I think about this Christmas, is giving, giving back to others. So, and that will wrap it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Ditweiler?
Thank you, President Regal. Time flies when you're having fun and when you're old. I blinked, summer is over. It's dark before dinner, and election day is tomorrow. So far, no serious win, but I'm confident it will come soon. If you have not already voted, please be sure to vote tomorrow. If you have voted, please encourage your friends and relatives to vote. And when you vote, keep in mind that there are two sorts of people running for office. For the first group is about what they can do for their communities, while the second group is trying to get their communities to promote their own personal interests and brands. There are some very clear choices along these lines in a couple of local races. Turning to tonight's meeting, there are two things on the consent agenda that I'm very excited to support. The district paying upfront for students to be able to take AP exams and flexible furniture. Doing well on AP exams can be a ticket to a highly selective college. And as I discussed last time, these schools are actively looking for qualified students from communities like Harupa Valley. These kids will sit in college classrooms with the children of the elite and may even get one as a roommate. The estimated cost for the AP exams is $125,000. That is less than two years' tuition at the kind of colleges we're talking about. And money very well spent. We will get to hear more about flexible furniture in Mrs. Ford's report. As a scholar of learning, I get almost as excited about flexible furniture as I do about formative assessment. A recent study out of Baylor University has shown that flexible furniture has a positive influence on students' attitudes towards school. And we all know that attitudes towards school is the single biggest predictor of student success. The study demonstrated that students felt empowered by their ability to help form their own learning environment. It also said that teachers should be provided with professional development to learn how to optimize the effect that flexible furniture has on learning and student engagement. Given our focus on the development of human capital, I am confident that this is in the works. I can also get very excited about flexible furniture from the point of view of a trustee with the fiduciary responsibility for the district. This $750,000 project will be paid for for one-time elementary and secondary emergency relief. Free, Esther Three Fonds. This is a brilliant way of stretching this one-time money out to bring benefits to our students for a quarter century or more, as quality classroom furniture lasts for a long time. When I was elected to the board two years ago, I thought I would mostly be looking in. And while I do find the occasional clerical error in the background materials, most of what I find myself doing is looking out and teaming up with trustees from other districts to influence the policies coming out of Sacramento. And teaming up with trustees from other districts to influence the policies coming out of Sacramento. Riverside County is the fourth biggest county in the state in terms of population. San Bernardino is fifth. Together, we are second only to LA. And people come from Sacramento to meet with us. I think we have a good situation here in Harupa, and I hope that it can continue. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a couple of updates for my side. Over the past two weeks, as trustee Bradford mentioned. Riverside County Office of Education in partnership held their fall joint meeting with San Bernardino County. Do quite a few, it was a room full of trustees from both, also the state superintendent. And we were able to hear what is. What everybody is seeing throughout the state, what they're anticipating, but also what they're going to start working on. So. And as parents and vested community members, we know that COVID really had an impact at all levels with education, health, mental health. And just even enough staff. I mean, we're challenged at every point, so. It was great to have that connection between two counties as well as the state superintendent. And know that we are continually working. It's a discussion because we all have the same challenges. But we want to be able to overcome them very soon. Harupa Valley High School, I as well attended Puffs. That was a great theater play, but I want to tell you, these students, they were so natural. In their performance on stage. It just seemed that they, we really have some great actors. At Harupa Valley High School and not that I haven't seen Patriot yet or anything, but I just was really blown away and. And just all struck at their natural talent. So I look forward to their future performances, but they really put a lot of effort into Puffs. The magical schools, what did you call it? Trustee Bradford. I love that title. It's a tongue twister and takes your breath. Also, annually, I'm always invited to Peralta Elementary's Fall Festival, so they are in full swing hosting these. I believe last year they did a picnic instead of. Having the Fall Festival, but it's a wonderful experience. The community comes together, students are wearing costumes, parents wear costumes, but they have a lot of. Games and food vendors. And it's a really fun evening. They have a live DJ pumpkin contest and Halloween costume contest, or excuse me, fall. Costume contest. But it's something I look forward to every year and thank them. I thank them all for the invitation every year. And then the Barona Grant, this is the third one that I'm aware of. I think there's a couple more, but five thousand dollar grants. To the schools to order five thousand dollars worth of new books. I mean, that's a lot of materials that we can. Enhance our library, encourage early reading. And continue to read until your adults. Or through your adulthood. November third, I visited our city council meeting in person. You know, the district, Dr. Hanson, has done a phenomenal job of launching culture of kindness. And so I just felt that it was natural to share with our city council. I invited them to participate. As we know that through society. There's bowling and one thing that Harupa Unified has done is we have continued to work on this and we have the culture of kindness. The press enterprise has recognized us through student surveys. We have the lowest reported bowling throughout the, in in the state, or no, was it, excuse me, the county, the county. And so the culture of kindness is just something that we encourage our students and our staff and. I encourage the parents to participate, but it's culture of kindness. We're kind to people. I mean, we need to really work together. We see bowling, we see bowling, I mean, as in adults. In print, online, it's there. And what it is, is our responsibility is to stand up to that. And we're just going to continue practicing kindness. Also, student board members, I look forward to having you guys here every meeting. Love the updates. It just, we are in full swing in school. I mean. We're rolling into the holiday season, so I know the socks are coming, the donut, the food drives are going to be coming, so. I want to thank you for gathering a lot of information on each school and providing that and bringing it to the board every, every meeting. And also the fresh fruits and veggies grants. I mean, that's a lot of money that we're receiving and. Mrs. Ford, your team, I mean, filing that and it seems to get larger and larger. Now we're expanding to other schools to ensure that we have. Some healthy nutritional, additional healthy nutritional foods for our students. So thank you so much for. Continue to look for those opportunities and extra dollars so that we can get food. And that's all I have as far as board comments right now. Next, we will move on to public verbal comments. And I will review my disclaimer for our public. This communication opportunity is included on the agenda of each regular board meeting, so citizens may suggest. Suggest or identify concerns about matters affecting the school district or request an item to be placed on a future agenda. As a reminder, the governing boards meetings are a business meeting of the board held in public. And although public participation is encouraged, it is not the public's meeting. The Harupa Unified School District Board of Education encourages and invites the public to comment on items listed on the agenda. Or on matters within the subject jurisdiction. Public speakers have the right to their own opinions and neither board members nor staff will be responding to those opinions or answering questions. The district's silence should not be mistaken for agreement, but simply to avoid legal entanglements and or to protect the privacy of situations. That may involve lawsuits, employee discipline or dismissal. Please be assured any serious allegations have been or will be investigated thoroughly. Any responses from the board will take place during board member comments. Each speaker will be given three minutes to speak and comments to be limited to a total of twenty minutes per topic. To everyone speaking tonight, please remember that our translator is providing translation and speak a little more slowly. Thank you. We will. We just have one this evening. Sonia Villaneda.
Is the light on? Can you hear me? Okay, thanks. Oh, good evening, board members. As you all stated, tomorrow, November eighth, is one of the most important elections in our lifetime. We keep hearing Biden state that democracy is on the ballot, but I would argue. That our children's health and safety is on the ballot. Should Gavin Newsom win? He is going to push to have our children shot up with an experimental drug annually. I honestly can't believe this is still a battle. To the best of my knowledge, Harupa Valley Unified School District or Hooper Unified School District. Has had no student or teacher deaths. Schools across the nation never shut down. Students were allowed to attend schools, see friends and teachers. And we never saw the astronomical number of students dying that we're told would happen. Two years lost and no one is owning up to it. Moving forward. I would kindly ask you. Um. To learn from these very big mistakes of closing schools and denying our kids a good education. Allow vaccine back, excuse me, allow the vaccine exemptions for anyone seeking one. It is a basic idea to allow parents to parent and make health decisions for their children. We will not co-parent with the government. Great names like Martin Luther King Junior, Rosa Parks, Susan B. Anthony, Nelson Mandela. Didn't make it into our history books by accident. These people recognized that laws in place were wrong and stood up for what is right. No matter the cost, we should be, we should be brave and fight for what is right. In the end, we will be all be, excuse me, we will all be held accountable to our children and to our maker. We still have about a minute left and that's all I wanted to say as far as the vaccine. I just want to make sure that the board understands. This battle is not over if it comes up because unfortunately Gavin Newsom. But with my minute left, I do want to bring up a concern that I've had. With conversations over the Del Sol Academy. My son is currently in kinder, but he does not attend that school. Because you do not offer full-time kinder, but I would like to transition him there for first grade. But I've heard the complaints about the overcrowding at the school and it continues to grow. So my big concern as a taxpaying citizen, as someone who bought into the community, actually built the park adjacent to that school. The influx of students that are coming in and the potential future students coming in from the the future projects. Is a big impact not only to the school, but to the community because there's people there who don't have kids going there and the amount of traffic. But our kids deserve better and I think you guys need to take a serious look at all the intro district. If I said it correctly, intro district transfers that have been granted to some of these other children. I feel bad for them, but. I need to fight for our kids that have the right to go to that school. So please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Administrative reports and written communications. Mrs. Santos. Thank you, President Regal. In accordance with Board Policy five-one-one-six-point-one, parents will be notified beginning November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. Of the open enrollment policy and procedure. Open enrollment will run from November twenty eighth through January twenty seventh. Copies of the parent information, brochure, the parent letter and FAQs are included in the backup materials. Thank you. Thank you. Administrative report and written communications, Mrs. Ford. Thank you for the presentation to come up here. So on tonight's agenda, as Dr. Dipwiler mentioned. We will be asking the board to approve the first phase of our elementary classroom furniture replacement project. Over the course of the past year, the elementary classroom furniture task force has met to discuss the replacement of the existing student furniture. And our, with new flexible classroom furniture. The task force set goals, priorities and options for the new furniture and I'll discuss those in just a few minutes. And furniture samples were brought in for the task force to consider, so we actually did bring them in to this room. And looked at those, as well as the task force members have the opportunity to see flexible furniture at Del Sol, because we do have the flexible furniture there. As well as Eastwood Elementary in Irvine. They visited that school site. They also, several members of the task force also attended a furniture vendor show. So they could see all the various options that were available. And that was in Anaheim. And then members of the task force also presented the options to their school sites. And we got feedback from the teachers on those, on those particular options. Once the implementation of the elementary classroom furniture is complete. Classrooms will have received new student furniture, which will include tables and chairs. As well as a me teacher desk and chair. So through the process, the task force developed the following goals and priorities. A standard, they identified the standard configuration for different grade spans, so recognizing that TKK is is a little bit different, unique. So that would be one grade span, first through third would be this next grade span and then fourth through sixth. And then also recognizing that there's some differences that are needed for our special day classes as well, STC classes. And then options for students, they felt that that students needed options in the classroom, so options in the type of table that they may sit at. The type of chairs that they may have, but there needed to be that flexibility in that sense. And then also that the furniture was flexible and easy to move. So all of this furniture is on cast, on casters. So that it is able to be easily moved, but it's on, it has two casters, not four, so it doesn't move really easy and they are lockable. It's also the, the goal of the furniture was to be able to easily arrange that furniture for whatever the particular lesson needed. And to make sure that they were, you know, meeting the instructional objective. And then another priority was the shape of and the surface area of the furniture. And so particularly, they wanted rectangular shape. And the surface area, they wanted it to be large enough to accommodate the learning tools like a Chromebook and a textbook. And be able to have both of those out at the same time. And they also wanted to provide options for teachers as far as their desk choice. So, you know, we will be providing some of a variety of options there that will be available for teachers to choose from. From a podium style to a more traditional desk. And then the furniture needed to be, we did include custodial on our task force, so the furniture. Needs to be easy to clean and we also wanted to make sure it was durable and it was long-lasting. So the configurations look like this. Those are just, of course, it's general renderings of that, but on the upper left, you'll see that there's a TKK classroom. Which is primarily made up of groups of tables with various shapes and heights. And that was specific, they wanted, they wanted different shapes because they wanted to teach shapes. So it's a perfect way to be able to do that. And then in first through third grade, there's nine single tables and four adjustable. Height tables, which are flip and nest tables. So those are tables that they flip up. And you can move them out of the way. So you have a lot of flexibility within the classroom. And you can also set it up as a gallery. So that there could be, you know, the tables could all be together and it could be like a gallery where they're putting their work up on that gallery. So they wanted that. And then for four through six, there's eighteen single tables and five adjustable heights with the nest tables. Again, all of those have lockable casters. Oh, I did want to mention in first through third, they also wanted an extra table. That would be a round table that would be fifteen inches high for students that would prefer to sit on the floor and actually do work. And that was something that at Del Sol they found. Although they like the roundness of it, at Del Sol, the tables were kind of an odd shape, so they, they, but they were that height. And they did like the height, but they wanted more of the round shape. So the the flexibility for the single tables, they wanted to have flexibility for those to be able to stack them. So one of the things that we had a long discussion about was the book boxes, the book boxes that can go under tables. And instead of having those, to be able to provide cubbies in the classrooms where they could put their books in those cubbies. And store them there and still have the flexibility with the, with the furniture. So then the, the next step in this process is to move forward. The order tonight, which will be for our early adopter classrooms. And so in, in addition to the feedback that we receive from the task force and the teachers at the site, we'll be able to receive. Feedback from the teachers that receive this first set of classroom furniture. And so what we're looking at is that once the board approves tonight, each elementary school, with the exception of Del Sol, since they have the flexible furniture already. Will receive a set of early adopter classroom furniture. And it would be a set for. For TK, one, one classroom TKK. Whichever classroom that might be, one classroom first through third, so it might be a first grade, it might be a second grade, it might be a third grade. One set of furniture for a fourth, fifth or sixth, that will happen at each school. And then if they have an STC class at that school, then they would also get a set of furniture for that as well. And basically due to the, so roughly when we finish with this early adopter, we'll have about fifty-three classrooms. That will have furniture across the district, the new furniture. That will allow us to get some good feedback from the teachers regarding what worked, what didn't. If there's, you know, some, some small changes that we need to make. And then due to the current lead time on the furniture, the district's working with a vendor to quick ship. About twenty-two of those classrooms out of the fifty-three. Unfortunately, they don't have enough in stock to be able to quick ship all of them, all fifty-three. But we'll quick ship twenty-two and then we'll order the, we'll order the others at the same time, but we'll be getting those at a later date. And I'll talk about timeline in just a few minutes. As mentioned, the early adopter process will provide feedback from teachers. We also want to get feedback from students. And as well as the principal. Principals at the school sites. And it will also give us some more definitive data on the logistical aspect of this project, which is how to remove. The old furniture and put the new furniture in. And so we are looking at trying to do that in the evenings. On probably like starting on a Friday evening and then work through the weekend. So that's the timing that we're hoping that we're going to be able to do. So looking at the timeline. We're here in November, as Dr. Dipwiler mentioned already. And when we're planning for this. And when we're planning for this tentative timeline, initially we'll place the order for the quick ship in the early adopter classroom. So we'll be placing the order for all 53, but 22 of those should come quicker. And that, those should, those 22 classrooms should arrive in December or January. So then we would be able to put those in and deploy those out to the school sites and get those in place. And then the remaining early adopter classrooms, we're expecting to be delivered in March. And then, but, you know, again, we've got, we have supply chain issues that have still been happening. We're hoping that they are getting better, but they are continuing. So it could potentially come in April. Our hope is that we can get everything in by April so that we get a good solid month in May to get some feedback from the teachers on that. And then the plan would be in, in the summer of, of 2023 is when we would place the final order for all of the new classroom furniture for elementary. The other, the other piece that I wanted to mention, I know Dr. Jett Wyler talked about it, is there is professional development that will happen with this early adopters. And then again, once we roll it out to the, to all classrooms across the district, but we will be providing some professional development. One of our internal teachers has worked, has used this flexible furniture. So that teacher will likely help us with that, this process, as well as the vendor has a teacher that, that they work with that use flexible furniture, just came out of the classroom last year. So, and they use the flexible furniture. So they'll be also working with us to get the professional development out there on how to use it, you know, how to easily rearrange it, you know, some of the, the nice features, you know, to be able to use. So we will be doing that as well as part of this project. So we're just really excited about the opportunity to use the one-time funds to bring something that will be long lasting and, and a benefit to our, our, our teachers, our students, you know, and, and our programs. Thank you.
Trustee Navarro.
Thank you, President Regal. This is Ford. So yeah, coming from someone who had ADHD as a kid and couldn't sit in those stone ancient desks and who would go sharpen his pencil three or four times in a day just to get out of the seat. Great idea. What brought us about? Was, did we read a study? What, what brought us about to kind of bring this implement into our district?
Well, we, we had conversations about it, but it was really one of those, you know, we were talking about with one-time money, what are some of the things that we can do that are long lasting and make a significant impact? And so classroom furniture is one of those things that came up. And I have to say that Mr. Jeff Lewis with our persons department, he was one of the people that brought it forward and said, I think this would be great if we were, would be able to do this. And then of course, it was, you know, everything's decision, you know, to make that happen.
Yeah. Then what do we, so when you said we're going to get feedback, would we be able to get like data about improved behavior, improved test scores, or, or, you know, more work getting done and less kids acting out? Is that going to be something that we'll receive back in that feedback?
Absolutely. I mean, we'll be asking questions like that, like, are your students more engaged? You know, do you see, do they seem to have their, get their wiggles out more than, than they did before? You know, so basically all of those questions about, you know, student engagement, are you able to do more collaborative, collaborative projects? You know, what are the stu-, we want to know what the students say about furniture? You know, how do they feel about it as well?
And then what do we do with the old desk and all that? Does that get donated to other school districts and something we could give to PICO to see if they, they needed? What would we do with that?
So, so we're really, and that's going to be part of the logistics on this one. But what we're looking at is we're looking at what furniture can we, that is still in good shape, that we may want to keep in the event we need for, you know, furniture for. So some of it we'll likely hang on to, but I would say the majority of it, it'll either be furniture that we will surplus, which when we surplus, anything that we surplus, we have to actually take it like to auction. And so we would do that. And, and then if there's anything that's broken, those type of items, then we would, we would actually discard.
And lastly, does the projected enrollment for coming years, did that play a factor in that to be, you know, utilize that information to make sure we're getting there enough or not over ordering the desk?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we're looking at the number of students, the number of classrooms, number of teachers. So all of that is part of this process, as well as identifying, you know, what do we want to have on hand in the event, you know, we needed to put another classroom in right away. We want to make sure that we have some, some in our stock and in our inventory to hang on to as far as that, but not too much because we don't have enough space to keep lots of extra furniture.
Yeah. Now, that's great. Now, for someone who has a partner who teaches in the district and has to help them summertime to move tables and move stuff, they're having those options of them to fold up and move out of the way, which will also give our, I think our custodians a great time to de-clean the classrooms without having the shacks on top of each other and, and whatnot. So great foresight by your team to utilize this one-time money for a really a, a great program that will benefit the district. So great job for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was definitely a team of, the task force did a great job. Teachers gave us great input, our custodial staff as well. Mr. Lewis, he had him, his staff, they led, they basically led the project. So I appreciate them as well, too.
Trustee Beth. Am I to understand that this allows students to sit on the floor?
In the first through third, there is an option for, well, we have the, the small round table. And so students would be able to sit on the floor. It's a 15 inch high table.
I really like that this solves left-handed students' problems. Thank you. Trustee Jett Wyler.
Thank you, President Regal. I just want to say that I'm really impressed. You've really done your hallmark, and I think this is going to work out well for us. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for the presentation. I do have a couple of questions. And just some basics. What is the material that they're using to put the furniture?
So it is, it is steel legs and then the top is like a poly. Yeah, it's a composite.
Okay. So don't worry about wood, treatment of wood.
No, no, no. Yeah, no wood expansion. So the company that makes the furniture that, that we're looking at, it's, you know, on a piggyback, you saw that on the, on the consent agenda. It's, they're, they're actually, they're in Germany. So the, the furniture's coming from Germany. But they do have a warehouse in Texas, and that's where this are, like our quick ship would be coming from. But the VS furniture is the furniture that we have at Del Sol. It's held up really well. And we, we actually then, you know, identified other districts that have purchased furniture and, and we knew what not to, to purchase. So, but the, the VS has held up very well and has a, it has a long warranty on it. And, and if there's anything that breaks or, you know, we would just turn it back in and get another piece.
engraved, the gun stick to the bottom, those type of things are going to withstand that?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if, if somebody really is trying to damage, they would be able to damage, you know, damage it. But it is, I mean, it's, it's built to withstand school use.
Oh, perfect. And now what is the configuration going to be when it's somebody's handicap? So if they're in a wheelchair or a washer, you know, cerebral palsy or something like that, what is that? What is the plan for that?
So we do have, so each of the classrooms has, have tables that are available. So, and those, those tables can, we can vary the height.
Okay.
So that would be able to accommodate a wheelchair.
Okay, that's what I wanted to, and then when you look at it and say grow and they go into the other classrooms, they're going to be able to accommodate their needs as well?
Yes. Yeah. And it actually goes, the tables go to standing height. So there will be some tables that will, that kids could stand at if they chose, if they chose to stand. And we do have students that they want to stand.
Okay, perfect. Look forward to seeing this live and when they get into the classroom and start rolling them out and having that impact on our students, like you talked about with the wiggles and things like, you know, just keep them, get that energy out of them so that you focus on the studying. So thank you so much for that report. And then we will move on to administrative reports and written communications. Dr. Hanson.
Thank you. Just a couple of things tonight. First of all, Mr. Garcia had mentioned the Veterans Day parade, and we did actually push that information out on our social media channels, Parents Square Today. So anybody, if they want those details, if they could go ahead and go to, to our website or to our social media feeds, and you'll be able to find those details for, for Saturday. So that's, that's exciting. We'll have a bus there and, and we'll be assisting the city in, in various ways there with that. I'd also like to just give you a, a quick update on, on Del Sol Academy study. So the survey ended last week, I believe on Tuesday. So Hanover Research is now compiling the data and putting a report together for us. In the meantime, we're, we are still gathering information and data from our demographer, who is, you know, waiting on, on some of the projects that are moving forward in the city, which will have a major impact on, in that area. And so we're waiting on that information so we can get the projected enrollment over the next 10 to 10 years or so in that area, based on the new development. We'll be sending out a message or a letter to the community, just providing an update for them as well as where we're at in that process. We plan on presenting to the board early 2023. So that's just a quick update. Again, we're essentially in the, in the data gathering stage and waiting on a few, you know, a few pieces of information from the city through our demographer about the upcoming developments that are being proposed in that, that area. And then lastly, I'd just like to, we have a really cool video that our communications department put together, just highlighting some of the things that took place in the month of October. And we thought we'd share that because as President Regal mentioned, and, and want to thank you for going to City Council and, and promoting our school district and the wonderful things that are happening here, especially the kindness campaign. And so you'll, you'll see pieces of that, as well as other wonderful events that took place in October. So thank you to our comms team for their work in putting this together. As you can see, there's a lot of things going on in the school district, and that's just a snapshot of, of some of the things that we could capture, but many more things taking place throughout the district of the various sites. So again, thank you to the communications department for putting that together. It's a great way to kind of see what's happening.
I love it. Thank you so much. We will now move on to approve adopt except routine action items by consent, number one through 28.
Moved and approved.
Second. Okay, first by trustee Navarro, second by trustee Garcia. Let's go ahead and call for the vote. Ooh, five votes. Thank you. And then we will move on to board action items. Approved tentative agreement with NEA Haurupa. Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, President Regal. Before the board this evening is a tentative agreement reached with NEA Haurupa for the 2223 school year. Highlights of the agreement include an ongoing 10% increase in salary schedule for 2223, an additional one-time 4% off schedule payment for 2223 school year, an ongoing increase to the health and welfare contribution of $768 per employee, taking up to the overall contribution of $12,468. And some additional changes and updates to language in our collective bargaining agreements. NEA Haurupa's membership at this point has voted to approve of the agreement. Relevant law does require the district to publicly disclose major provisions of a collective bargaining agreement such as this one prior to final approval by the governing board. Fortunately, those requirements were all met prior to the meeting this evening, and those required disclosure forms are included along with the tentative agreement in the backup materials. Administration recommends approval of this agreement. Thank you.
We love our teachers. I'd like to move to approve, please.
I will second that.
Okay, so first by trustee Bradford, second by trustee Navarro. Any questions or trustee Jett Wyler?
I trust we've compared this with the other agencies in the area, and this is comparable. 10% seems like a lot, but I know we're in an area of high inflation.
Without getting into confidential negotiations kind of topics, we, we have, that's always a part of our discussion. And this board is aware, there's board policy that actually, we always try to ensure that we are matching our benchmark districts with 10 of them. And so we do compare that data.
If there's no other questions or comments, let's go ahead and call for the vote. Congratulations. Approved compensation package for certified administration, classified management, and confidential employees. Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, President Regal. Similarly, before the board is a compensation package recommendation for the members of our management leadership team. This recommendation mirrors that, which was just approved a moment ago. Our administrative, management, and confidential positions in the district held by both certificate and classified employees are not represented by a union. Included among those are all of our district's principals, site-based administrators, several coordinators with district and site responsibilities, classified supervisors, directors, and all of our confidential employees. We generally recommend increases for these employee groups in the amounts comparable to those employees who do engage in formal collective bargaining. Therefore, administration is recommending a compensation package similar to that which was just approved a moment ago, including a 10% salary increase, $768 per employee increase in health and welfare contribution, and a one-time off-schedule payment of 4% based on the 2223 salaries. Those updated schedules for management confidential employee groups are included in the backup materials. Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second. First by trustee Navarro, second by trustee Garcia. Any questions or comments? Okay, let's go ahead and call for the vote. Five votes, and passes. By the vote, pass this. Board member committee reports. Trustee Ditwiler.
Uh other than the the fall joint meeting, I have not uh had any committee meetings, but let me spend a second on the fall joint meeting. Uh Riverside County is the fourth largest county in California. San Bernardino County is the fifth largest county in San Bernardino in California, together, we're the second. And being so close together and with people who work in one county and our board positions in the other county, we have a very strong uh cohesive group that can get the state superintendent of schools to come to our meeting. So that's what I did. Thank you.
Trustee Navarro.
Yeah, I attended the same meeting as well and to uh reiterate, but Dr. Ditwiler was saying is it just a great opportunity to meet with other board members in our area, kind of see what the issues that they're facing as a board and kind of passing along ideas of of ways to um enhance our our district. And then kind of just kind of really, I think, one of the overall themes is kind of what COVID, um the effect it had in all our districts and then recovering from that and and that. So it was a great speakers, it was a great time and well worth the evening there. And that is it.
Thank you, trustee Bradford. Thank you. My committee meeting was the best of the best committee, the result of which you saw tonight. And I want to tell you how wonderful it is to read the suggestions of our employees and the comments that they make about their coworkers. And one that really touched me was about the extra effort that one individual goes to to do things just the way his customers like things done. And that's real customer service. And and that's not something that other people see. It's just what those people, he he gets to know his customers, his coworkers in such a personal way that he knows the difference that it makes for them and it makes them happy and it makes their jobs happier. And they appreciate that about them, don't they, John? Yes. So that's what our district runs on, that people appreciate each other and that is reflected in the best of the best nominations, which have changed from quarterly to monthly so that we may honor those individuals on a more frequent basis. So thank you, Mr. Brooks, to you and your staff. Thank you, President Regal. Thank you. Trustee Garcia.
Thank you, President Regal. Okay, I've got a little bit of a list here. Uh first of all, I forgot to recognize the best, the best. So Abigail Amador, Alan Bass, Nancy Arroyo, Joseph Bologna, still here, Bologna. Sorry. Christopher Mercado, and honorable mention, Thomas Sanchez, uh Porta Sanchez, and Andrea Zambrano. Just a follow-up on uh what Dr. Ditwiler and and trustee Navarro had mentioned about uh the joint conference. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it. But uh between Riverside County and San Bernardino County, we represent almost one-sixth of the students in California. So we have a great collaboration there. And and every single member on the board here is active with Riverside County School Board Members Association. And I'm really proud of that. We have a lot to offer, you know, not just locally here, but uh legislation throughout state. So thank my colleagues for that. Finally, kindness, well, not finally, I have to go a few, the kindness campaign. Uh that was a great presentation today, and as President Regal mentioned, um you know, the newspaper article. And somebody asked me today, does this just about feel good? I mean, I just feel good about this. What's the metric? And so I think, I think we answered that question uh through surveys from students and how they feel and how they're learning. Uh so that's, that's uh important to know. It's not just something we're doing to say we're feeling good. Linda Chart, a previous member of this board has put out some social media messages. She's working on a Riverdale High School veterans and alumni float for Saturday's uh parade. So if you're interested, please go out and reach out to Linda. And finally, a couple of things. Uh Ben Gere, and I visit that uh with Senator Roth, who's there, present that check in Barona. I was there with President Regal and Dr. Hanson. And also Pedley, a couple of weeks ago, with the senior member, Cervantes. And she also had a third grade presentation uh thirty minutes afterwards. It's never by government, so so really good visit. And finally, my committee reports, so uh D-LAC we met a couple of weeks ago, and Nancy's out there, Nancy Arroyo. So one of the concerns, one of the actions I took from that, I thought I was supposed to just in those meetings, but I guess they give me some action. So uh there's a lot of concerns about traffic safety, and there has been, you know, different schools like Stone or Group of Middle. And um so we're working closely with the city on that. And so I'm working with D-LAC to uh to determine the process that we can all go together to city council uh through the proper channels and and see what we can do about the getting the word out. It's not about complaining, it's just about what can we do to make this better? So Mrs. Ford was there as well with uh Robin, uh talking about uh the projects. And that's all I have, President Regal. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um I have not, or there's not been any committee meetings for me in the past month. We have one coming up in December or January. Uh that concludes the board comments. Dr. Hanson, do you have anything to share?
I'd just like to thank the board tonight for kind of completing the uh the negotiations process and for supporting our employees. We feel very strongly that we have wonderful employees here in our district and and we're happy that we're able to compensate them and be able to um effectively compete for for high-quality people. So thank you for doing that. And that's it for me.
Okay, I hope um you will all consider the Culture of Kindness campaign. And practice that, share that, and um live every day being kind. Otherwise, this meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-five. Have a good evening.